Are you guys ready?
Yes, we are.
Okay, they're waiting for your signal.
We're good. Any time you're ready.
Good evening and welcome to the December 21st, 2015 Hampden Town Council meeting. I'm the Deputy Mayor, William Shakespeare, sitting in for our Mayor, David Ryder, this evening. First of all, I'd like to introduce those present. Those to my right and your left is Counselor Terry McAvoy, Counselor Dennis Marble, Counselor Steve Wild, Counselor Gregory Saroyes. To my left is Council Mayor, David Ryder, Town Manager Angus Jennings, and our Town Clerk Denise Hodgkin. And I hope you're going to enjoy our new sound and video system this evening. Would everyone please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on the agenda, the Consent Agenda. Is there any counselor who wishes to pull anything from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? And at this moment, we have public comment. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to make a comment on anything which is not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, moving on, we have the Policy Agenda, which is news presentations and awards. And I'm going to ask the council permission to move this to the end of the meeting this evening, if that's all right? Thank you. Public hearings. We have a public hearing on proposed zoning ordinance map amendment to map 9A, Lot 1, at the corner Emerson Drive and Colbrook Road, from Residential A District to Business District. I'm going to ask our Economic Development Director if he would please come to the podium.
Good evening all. I have visual aids. Everybody likes visual aids. Dennis and Debbie Melvin approached my office and expressed their interest in utilizing Homestead, for one of them, I'm not quite sure which one, at the corner of Colbrook Road and Emerson Drive. What they expressed desire was, is to add an additional dwelling unit there. It's a two-unit right now. They'd like to have a three-unit as an investment property, thereby keeping their Homestead and investing in it, if you will. The Planning and Development Committee approved the concept and sent it to the Town Council for forwarding to the Planning Board. The council sent it to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed zone change. And as a result of that public hearing, made a motion to forward to the Town Council the recommendation ought to pass. The issue being is that currently, the structure is in the Residential A Zone. The Residential A Zone only allows two units at a maximum, under certain circumstances. The Business District, which is an abutting district here, and on the other side of the residential subdivision, actually allows three units, because the density allowance is different than those in the Residential A Zone. So in essence, what they're asking to do is to slide this district over to grab this additional lot here. What I think is beneficial is that their plans for the structure will maintain the integrity of that residential area. Be having a three-unit instead of a two-unit, but it certainly isn't a commercial venture. It will remain residential. The notification has been made to residents of at all 300 feet away from the property. We did have input from the people within this residential subdivision. Those that came, there was no opposition to the zone change.
Thank you, Dean. At this moment, I will open up the chambers to public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers who wish to speak in favor of this change? Seeing none, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak against the change? Is there anyone wishing to speak neither for nor against the change? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion from the Town Council?
I move the adoption of the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment for map 9A, Lot 1, at the corner of Emerson Drive and Colbrook Road, from Residential A District to the Business District.
My second.
Do we have any discussion from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, unanimous? Thank you. Moving on, nominations, appointments, and elections. We have a number of them this evening, most of them from the Services Committee. And I'm going to ask our Services Committee Chairperson to address each and every one of these, if he would please.
Thank you. At the last Services Committee meeting, we discussed five applications from five citizens who have selflessly offered their time and energy to serve on various committees. All were unanimously approved for recommendation to the council for appointment or reappointment. I make a motion that the council reappoint Anthony Morcos to the Library Board of Trustees.
Any discussion?
Are we going out of order?
Yes, you didn't start with the first one, but...
I didn't realize it made any difference, as long as I got them all. Sorry?
We'll keep up with you.
We had a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
I make a motion that the council reappoint Sherry Condon to the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
I make a motion that the council reappoint Stephanie Shane to the Recreation Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I make a motion that the council appoint Francis Prigliosi to the Recreation Committee.
Second.
And any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous again.
I make a motion that the council reappoint Patrick Foley to the Pool Board of Trustees.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And we have one more, Jerry Willett, and we'll let our Finance Committee Chairperson address that.
Tonight, in the Finance Committee meeting prior, Jerry Willett was brought up for reappointment to the Personnel Appeals Board. It was the Finance Committee's recommendation for unanimous reappointment to that board.
Do we have a motion? That motion to approve?
Again, I can make a motion for reappointment for Jerry Willett to the Personnel Appeals Board.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Moving on, we have unfinished business this evening. Revised order referenced the fundraising at the transfer station. Now I'm going to let our Town Manager address this, if he would please.
As the council will recall, at your prior meeting on December 7th, you took up the policy question of whether or not fundraising should be allowed at the transfer station. And at that time, there was a draft order in front of you that would have prohibited fundraising during discussion of the council that evening. It was the direction to expand the prohibition and to really limit the transfer station to those activities dealing directly with disposal of solid waste. So what you have before you is the rewritten order, as well as a redlined version of what was before you last time. So if the rewritten version meets your objectives, then it's ready for endorsement.
Do we have a motion from the council?
I'll move adoption of the rewritten order regarding the limitation of anything non-solid waste disposal at the transfer station.
Second.
Do we have any public comment on this subject? Seeing none, do we have any committee comments? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And unanimous. Moving on, to be, we have an update on the proposed MRC legal agreements and discussion of proposed solid waste agreement from PERC. Town Manager, again, please.
There's no action requested of the council tonight, however, this is a recurring item on the agenda because of the scope and scale and long-term significance of this issue to the town. There are a number of moving parts related to the Municipal Review Committee's proposal with Fiber Right for a new waste-to-energy facility here in Hampden. What we've received is updated draft legal agreements from the MRC Board. These have been changed since the versions that were sent in October, and which were the subject of a memo that this council provided in response to those drafts back in November. We also, I've included in this packet materials that were distributed at the MRC's annual meeting last Wednesday at the Cross Center. And that same day, we also received proposed solid waste agreements from PERC. So that's all before you. As you'll know from prior discussions, there is a multi-town independent legal review of the MRC proposed documents that is responsive to this council's comments, as I understand were received from other towns as well. Both the statement that the town would not consider entering into long-term binding agreements without independent legal review, and further that council felt that it was The town was not eager to incur those costs themselves. In response to those concerns, which were raised by others, the MRC Board voted to fund an independent legal review. So that work is now under contract. It's been awarded to Attorney Kat Sofikis, and that is underway. And we expect that to be complete by early to mid-January, at which point it'll be shared with this council. And I attended a meeting of town managers last Thursday to discuss that, two Thursdays ago. So just an informational update, happy to answer questions you may have.
Yes, go ahead.
Angus, was the MRC Annual Meeting last week at the Cross Center?
Yes.
Do I have that right?
Yes.
Was there knowledge at that meeting of what made the news today, with PERC forming a new company?
It didn't come up, no.
Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how we can all best look out for the public's collective interest in a process that seems, it just feels to me, without knowing a lot, that it's going to continue to be divisive and resistant by those that have a vested interest in Orington and that facility. And while that's going on, the clock's ticking about the end of the agreement with the preferred electric rates with the MIRA. So I appreciate, and I know we all appreciate you keeping us informed and monitoring this. I just can't help but wonder where we're headed.
Any other counselor? Yes, go ahead, Terry.
Would it be possible to put this, this looks like a fairly complete offering from PERC in the package here, could we put this on the Infrastructure Committee meeting for next Monday, so we could talk about it?
Certainly.
I mean, I haven't had a chance to read through all of it yet. I mean, it's rather lengthy. And is there any possibility, when will we see new versions of the stuff from MRC? I mean, when?
There are new versions that are available through their website. I didn't include them in tonight's packet, because it represents, you know, a significant amount of paper, frankly. Because, for two reasons, there's nothing before the council tonight, but also, we know that those revised documents may well change again as a result of the independent legal review. But certainly, for the infrastructure meeting a week from tonight, we could include both of those items. And it's really up to the council whether you want to get into those details before the documents start, stop moving on the MRC side.
Right, but I was just thinking it'd be worth our while to at least look over the PERC one, because that looks to be, you know, I didn't notice in there where they were making any offers to make changes to it or anything like that. So, you know, at least that's a final document, as far as I can tell. So, thank you.
Any other counselor wish to question, comments? Thank you. Moving on to new business. We have a proposed amendment to the subdivision ordinance to provide for construction of private roads. The Planning and Development Committee recommends this be referred to the Planning Board. Do we have any public comment before we move on? Seeing none? What is the pleasure of the council? I'll make a recommendation, since I was Chairperson of Planning and Development Committee, I'll make a recommendation that the council refer this to the Planning Board.
Second.
Council discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next, we have a zoning ordinance text amendment, Section 7.2, building height definition. This is going to be, I'm going to, I will introduce this for a public hearing. That's all we have to do on that.
And to establish a date for that hearing.
That'd be the next town meeting?
Typically, it's really to the will of the council, but the, I understand that typically the first meeting in January after an election is largely reserved for organizational issues. It wouldn't preclude holding a hearing that night, but if you choose not to do that, the next available would be January 19th, which is a Tuesday because of the holiday.
Is that all right with the council? January 19th. Moving on, zoning ordinance text amendment, 4.10, home occupation permits. Town attorney opinion was to refer this back to the Planning and Development Committee. Do we have any public comment on that, first? Seeing none? Do we have any motion from the council to refer this back to the Planning and Development Committee?
Make a motion that we, zoning ordinance text amendment, Section 4.10, home occupancy permits, be referred back to Planning and Development Committee.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous again. Next one is zoning ordinance text amendment, Section 4.8, signs. Want to introduce that for public hearing? And I'll make a motion that we do so. Want to do that on the same date, on the 19th?
Actually, I'd like to move it to the one before, because we've been dealing with a sign issue for quite a while, so faster we can move this along, the better I would feel about it.
Do we have time, Angus, during that meeting?
Sure. Yeah, the agenda on the fourth, like I said, is, will be light.
Any discussion by the council? Next, we have the Kiwanis Poker Tournament License Renewal. Do I have a, every year, the Kiwanis, apparently, since I've been on the council, has had a poker tournament, and we have to approve that license-wise, right, Denise? Do we have any motion from the council?
I make a motion that we approve the Kiwanis Poker Tournament License Renewal.
My second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Committee reports, we're moving right along here. Services?
Thank you. At the Services Committee meeting on the 14th, Manager Jennings and the committee discussed the fiscal realities of the continued operation of the ski-in center. And this issue will be an ongoing topic of discussion, so I encourage anyone who has an interest in the recreation program to please attend the Services Committee meetings. And I'm not sure what the schedule for those are beginning next month, because it's not on the schedule, but please look at the town website and check out for the next Services Committee meeting. Thank you.
Infrastructure, have you had a meeting?
We have not had a meeting since the last council meeting. Next infrastructure is next Monday night.
Thank you. And we just, excuse me, just had a Planning and Development meeting this last Wednesday evening, on December 16th. And we discussed Marina signs. Our Community Development Director, Dean Bennett, updated the committee on his ongoing conversation with Chip Kelly, on the right-of-way technician from the MDOT, with regard to the potential placement of a municipal/business sign at the Marina Road entrance. Upon determining the road to be private, additional information was provided that in order to comply with state statutes, the property upon which the sign is placed must be owned by the business advertised. A municipal sign exclusively pertaining to the municipality is allowed as an off-premise sign pending filing of paperwork. Our Community Development Director again informed the committee that Fiber Right was still undecided as to whether they were going to propose a water-cooled or air-cooled methodology at their pending facility. Our director stated both have potential cost implications that will need to be explored. A resident by the name of Ron Hydoo spoke to the committee of his concerns regarding the growing number of distressed properties in Hampden. Mr. Hydoo handed out pictures of a number of properties, along with current tax information. He requested of the committee that they consider supporting policy that would encourage owners of such properties to maintain, repair, and secure the property to protect the public interest and minimize the impact on property values. A code enforcement officer, Miles Block, addressed each other properties discussed and updated the committee and Mr. Hydoo on the current ongoing efforts to address Mr. Hydoo's concern. A code enforcement officer further explained the limited options at his disposal that would reach beyond public health, safety, and welfare. State and unsight in this could be addressed with a property maintenance ordinance. Mr. Hydoo expressed his concern for overregulation. He appealed to the committee to begin establishing reasonable measures to help prevent properties from declining into a diminished condition. The majority of the committee members expressed their appreciation for Mr. Hydoo speaking to them of his concerns. Many expressed their agreement with his position. Counselor McAvoy stated that he would not be in favor of efforts suggested by Mr. Hydoo. Our Mayor Ryder stated that he would like to discuss the town's requirements for open space at the next Planning and Development meeting, and asked that such an agenda be There any comments from the council?
Earlier tonight, in Finance Committee, we had a reappointment, and you heard that on the council agenda, and that was just about the extent of our Finance Committee meeting tonight.
Thank you. Now for Manager's Report.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report from Town Manager. That's, thank you. Counselor comments? Let's start with Counselor McAvoy.
Thank you. I just want everybody to enjoy the snowless winter we're having so far. And as usual, shop local and buy American. Good night, Hampden. And check out this new system we have here. This is $50,000 worth of electronic equipment you're listening to and viewing. Hope you enjoy it.
Dennis?
That sounds like a challenge for us to deliver a product worthy of that technology. I just have two things. One's a reminder, and I was asked to bring this up by the folks who attended the last meeting. Every month, I meet with town residents at the town library on the third Saturday of each month at 9:00. We're calling it a hot stove, it doesn't matter what we call it. But it's an informal talk, it's a chance to sit around and talk town business. All are welcome. A second thing, I'm going to try to do this well, is I think Hanukkah is over. I'm not sure about Kwanzaa, and I know this isn't the right time of year for Ramadan. That said, I want to offer all Hampden residents a Merry Christmas in the spirit of understanding that we all have religious values near and dear to us, and those holidays mean a lot to everybody. So Merry Christmas.
It's hard to believe we've got the first year, or the final, a whole year under the belt for the new counselors, including myself. And we're just about ready to start it all over again, going into budget season. But I want to reiterate what Counselor Marble was just saying, with happy holidays, Merry Christmas, everybody.
What I'd like to do, first of all, is to recognize Counselor Shakespeare. Bill, I will tell you that we may have not agreed on all topics, but we agreed more than we disagreed. And this is Bill's last council meeting, and definitely will be missed. I appreciate him being an individual who will listen. Again, we agree a lot of times to disagree, but he's an individual that will listen and hear individuals out. And I know his heart was always in the place of the people, the residents of Hampden, and making sure that the town moved forward. I'd like to also thank everyone for, or wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Enjoy the holiday season, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. David?
I just want to thank everybody for letting me be a counselor for another year. We have accomplished a lot this year. Some of the stuff, most people may never know, but I think we've made some great strides far in working with businesses and individuals on their land rights, and several other things to improve the town. And I look forward to the next year. It's not going to be any easier. There's a lot of difficult things ahead of us to look into. But I've really enjoyed this past year, and I look forward to serving the town of Hampden for the next year. And I wish everybody happy holidays and to spend time with your family.
And I have a few things to say. I'm going to go up to the podium, if that's all right. As most of you know, this is my last evening on the Town Council, for this year anyways. People ask me at times why I want to be on the Town Council. The answer, in my case, is because I believe I could make a difference and serve all the citizens in Hampden. Not just one specific group with an agenda, but every citizen. This requires difficult decisions to be made at times, some not very popular, but as the saying goes, you can't please everyone. But a good counselor will always do what is ethically and morally right. Serving over the past six years, I have seen a complete turnaround of individuals on this council. Some have come, served, and left. Had a personal agenda, either good or bad, in another's opinion, but soon realized they had to work with the rest of the council to get things accomplished. During the past two elections, I have heard new candidates say that we, as a council, are not doing enough to encourage, develop, and attract new businesses to this community. These are individuals who have absolutely no clue about the daily workings of the town's staff and council. They never attend council meetings, committee meetings, nor understand the inner workings of the town. Over the past six years, I have been on the council. We have worked diligently to attract new businesses to Hampden. We have surveyed businesses to see what they like, do not like, and what they need. We have revealed... We have revealed ordinances, revamped them as necessary to bring them up to date. We have revealed the Triangle area, the Business Park, the Ammo Park, the LL Bean Parcel, revealed intensely the Coburg Road corridor for future infrastructure and development, and currently looking intensely for a new in-town sports recreational facility area. We have worked diligently with the MRC and Fiber Right, a $60 million project, worked with H.E. Sargent to develop the rear acreage of the Business Park. I could go on and on about everything this Town Council has done and is doing every day for the betterment of the community. Hamden did not become the community of choice just by chance. We have, according to many, the best school system in the area, our library, our pool, our sports facilities are second to none, and our in-town businesses all attract families to want to live in Hamden. As one local Hamden citizen who happens to be a staff person in another community recently told me, "Other communities are envious of Hamden." And so they should be. We have many fine citizens who volunteer their free time for the betterment of Hamden, the Garden Club, the Historic Society, the Kiwanis, and those who participate in Children's Day, just to mention a few. I'm especially impressed by the number of volunteers who step up to serve on town boards and committees, the library, the pool, and especially the Recreation Department. I am quite proud and honored to be one of the Councilors who recruited our new Town Manager, Angus Jennings. He, in my opinion, is a diamond in the rough. A former Town Counselor, Tom Brand, said, "It takes a lot of pressure to make a diamond." And Angus, in my opinion, will handle the pressure as he and this Council work on the new budget. To finalize my thoughts, I would like to thank all those I have worked with over the past six years. The Town Managers, the Town Staff and Personnel, the Counselors, and most of all the citizens who gave me the opportunity to serve them. It has been a great honor. I will stay informed and may run for a Council seat again in the future. But I want to wish all the citizens and Council a happy holiday, both Christmas and New Year's. But one more thing, I'd like to thank a special person in my life, my wife, Rachel, for her encouragement and support for me to be able to work all day and then come home at night, sometimes one, two, three evenings, to attend meetings. So, thank you, and thank you all.
While you're right here, Bill, on behalf of the Town of Hamden and the Hamden Town Council recognizes William Shakespeare for his service as a Town Counselor and in the last year as Deputy Mayor, and he was also Chair of the Planning and Development Committee. Bill, you've been a big part of the town. You're involved in the Historical Society. I know you helped out on Children's Day. Just because you're leaving the Council, and I'm quite positive you're not going to leave the town of Hamden, you're going to be here supporting different things in town. You're going to be around, and I hope you come by and keep an eye on us and keep us straight. So, Bill, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, David.
As most of you know, Counselor Shakespeare and Mrs. Shakespeare request a copy of the Council meeting after each meeting. He comes in the next Tuesday. I have a DVD ready for him, and I charge him $3. Here's a year's worth of DVDs for you, my friend.
Thank you.
Okay, they're blank. You'll have to bring them back to me every week, but...
But you still charge me $3.
No, no, no. You get a year's free meetings.
Okay, thank you, Denise. I just want to say something. David's calling me Bill and calling me William, and there's a little bit of a joke on that. I go by both names. And one evening during a Planning and Development meeting, Dean Bennett called me William. And everybody's saying, "William? His name is Bill. Why are you calling him William?" And I spoke up, and I says, "Well, anybody, anybody who recognizes me calls me William." And so David Ryder immediately said, "Well, Bill." So, again, thank you. And is there any other discussion? Can we have a motion to adjourn this fine meeting? So moved. And we'll eat cake. Thank you.